Alright, cool. So we're back in our open session. The next, the next section here is school committee reorganization. For this one, like we did last year, the meeting is going to hand over to the superintendent or interim superintendent to run this next portion.
Okay, so this is my favorite time of the year where I, like Christmas, where I'm always seeing the whole school committee at this time. So at this time, I'd like to open up the floor for nominations. Do I have any nominations for the school committee chair?
I'd like to nominate Mike for school committee chair.
I'll second that. Mike, in a second for Mike. Any other nominations for school committee chair?
I would like to nominate myself.
Jessica.
Second.
And I have a second. You could go with all these names. Any other nominations for school committee chair? Last call. So I have two nominees for school committee chair. I have Mike and I have Jessica, both of them been second. I know over the floor, get any discussions on, on who would like to be, who the nominees are? Or if they'd like to say something on their behalf as well, too?
Yeah, I'd like to talk.
Jessica.
So I've been a member of the school committee for three years now. When I first moved back to Boylston in 2019, I said I wanted to keep my head down and keep out of small-town politics. And I found myself running for the school committee because I wanted a seat at the table when things were discussed. As a family nurse practitioner and mom and someone who majored in science-based studies, evidence means a lot to me. And if I don't know information about a particular topic, I do like to seek it out, find out information, talk to the experts, talk to the stakeholders within the district before I make decisions. I know before I joined the school committee, I was quite passionate about particular topics. I do have ADHD, so sometimes I do see things in black and white and sometimes difficulty seeing the gray. But that is something that I have become more aware of and recognize and try to take a deep breath before responding. I do appreciate how Laurie, when she was chair, she disagreed with what I was saying, but always made eye contact with me and treated with, with respect. And that's something that I have a goal to do as well as chair. I've attended two of the Massachusetts School Committee conferences and I will attend the one this week, too. I think it's a really amazing opportunity to see how other school committees are run, see what is the practice, the best practice by the MASC, who are members and who are running our superintendent search right now. You know, in the beginning, you're required to do charting the course. There's also summer sessions that you can attend for different topics. I took an online Robert's Rules class when I was told I couldn't amend a motion, when in fact, we can twice. I've also more recently attended a Zoom OML session run by the state to become more knowledgeable on this as well. When Laurie and I ran for this back in 2022, we were the only contested candidates within the election. And so I feel that I have earned a spot to participate as chair. I have attended two times the How To Be A Chair at the MASC conference. And in those trainings, said the chair is supposed to be the servant of the assembly, first among equals, chief volunteer. And, and these are my goals. I have no agenda besides the students trying to get the best education they can. And that may not be what my viewpoints are. And I'm really excited for a free exchange of ideas. Like was mentioned, sometimes you run in silos and so we don't know what other people are doing or attending or what efforts are being put forth. And then, you know, when discussions are made, it's realized that, that things might already be done by someone else. So I really would like to serve the committee. I'd like to serve the town. I know it is a time commitment and I know it is something that I would like to do. In many districts, they're respecting open meeting law. There's no discussions prior to the meetings about who would like to be chair. And so that's why I nominated myself. And so I would very much appreciate the opportunity to work with everyone. I know Lisa, we've attended the MASC conference together. We've not always seen eye to eye on things, but we've had pleasant dinners together and discussions. And Laurie, I enjoyed our time together on the school committee, I mean, the superintendent search as well. So, you know, I would really like the opportunity in the next year. I'm very excited about the potential Register CAS and future leadership that we have. So I respectfully would request your support in running for the chair.
Thank you, Jessica. Mike?
Sure. I'm very interested in continuing as the chair. I think this last year, we focused quite a bit on rebuilding, rebuilding of the central office. We did building in the district, rebuilding in the relationships in the town. I feel I've started to build some pretty positive relationships, especially with central office. The towns haven't told you this yet, but the towns will be coming to the December 9th meeting to talk about the budget with us. I invited them, both Kristen and Abel. Kristen's responded, still waiting to hear from Abel, but I think that's going to work out. I want to get through another smooth budget process. We have this year to continue the work we've been doing, cleaning up everything from the past, getting things where they should be. I know we're getting ready to close up FY24. FY25 went relatively smoothly. We got the budget passed smoothly in FY26 and hopefully again in FY27. I want to continue the work that we've done and the momentum that we have working with Al, getting the new superintendent hired and refocusing the committee work on the actual work that a committee has to do, budget superintendent policy and the things that go around that. So I really appreciate continuing that momentum, continuing to be the chair for that and handing over a well-running, well-oiled machine to the new superintendent, whoever that might be. So if that's something you're interested in, I would appreciate your support as well.
Thank you, Mike. Any further discussion?
I'd like to say something. So I appreciate that both of you want to do this job because it's not fun or easy. So a couple of years ago, I was talking to someone from one of the select boards. I can't remember where. And they said it becomes very dangerous when someone becomes chair for more than two or three years. And Mike's already done two years. And it's because it becomes their committee. And I think it would be, technically, I think everybody should take a turn at doing chair, right? I understand not everyone wants to do it because it's a lot of work. But Jessica has put in so much time and so much effort into learning Robert's Rules, open meaning law, how a meeting should run. She always tries to make sure everyone's, you know, things are on the agenda. And I just think it would be nice to have somebody else have a turn to do this role.
Any other further discussion? Thank you, Megan. Any last call for further discussion? Okay, with nothing further, it is time now to vote. I'm asking you, you're voting right now for the school committee chair. And I'm going to do it in alphabetical order. I feel like that's the fairest way to do it. I'm going to start with Jessica, you first, please.
So we're just saying names?
Yes, please, sorry.
Jessica.
Megan.
Jessica.
Laurie Yan.
Mike.
Lisa Menon.
Mike.
Beth Mansini.
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining. Mike Topman. Mike. So with that abstaining, we do a majority with five people voting, three for Mike as the chair and two for Jessica. Mike Topman will be our new chair for the 25-26 school year. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica, as well, too. Thanks, everybody else. So at this point, I'm going to turn over the being back over to chair of the DBRSD, which is Mike, and for you to fill the vice chair, school committee district clerk as well.
Yeah, alright, thank you, Al. So same process for vice chair. Is there any nominations for vice chair?
I would like to nominate Beth for vice chair.
I would second.
I'll nominate myself again. I'll second that. Oh, sorry.
Any others? Alright, anyone, anything to say?
I thought it's supposed to be a Berlin-Boylston. I thought we tried to do one from each.
I think we broke that rule when we did the subcommittee for superintendent, didn't we?
But never chairs.
There's, there's no such rule.
It's not a rule, it's just we've tried to keep it so that the leadership is split, but I.
So we looked at the regional agreement. There's nothing in there that designates that it should be going back and forth. We've had some, and you guys know this regional agreement better than I do. If we were previous districts, it was best live in the regional agreement. Why, 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 why? But doesn't, does not appear anywhere in our regional agreement. But something we're looking at revisiting our regional agreement, that certainly could be something that we absolutely clear.
So this was an expected outcome that we had to research the regional agreement for?
No, no, we were looking at the regional agreement constantly. The towns have been asking, no, the towns have absolutely been asking us to be looking at our regional agreement. They actually want to meet with Aaron and I to talk about the region agreement budgetarily. So we are constant, as we should be, looking at that regional agreement over and over and over again. So it wasn't, had anything to do with this, but we've been looking at that in the past as well, too.
To Laurie's point, I mean, we didn't care about individual town representation when we did the vote for that search committee. So it's not a rule, it's not in there. You can vote how you like to vote.
Jessica nominated herself and I'm wondering, you were nominated and do you accept the nomination?
I would be willing to do it. I was interested in possibly doing chair. I did not feel ready to do it.
Okay.
So you do want to do vice chair?
I wouldn't mind doing it, but I don't want to.
Uh-oh.
We'll go in the same alphabetical order, if I can remember correctly, Jess?
Point of order, should we have a moment of reset?
Should we?
I think we should.
Do you need a moment of reset? You okay?
Yeah, it's fine.
You should. Okay. Jessica.
Jessica.
Megan?
Jessica.
Lori?
Lisa. I didn't say Beth. I just threw it, I just threw it.
Okay, Lisa. Ah, was it Beth first? Sorry. Alphabet order, Lisa. So it was Jessica, Megan, Laurie Yan, and then Lisa.
You're abstaining from voting for yourself?
I think I'm going to vote for, um, for Beth.
Okay.
I'm going to be vice chair.
Alright, and Beth, your vote?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. I'll also vote for Beth. So same, same abstaining, three votes and two votes for Jessica. Beth, you can be vice chair. Next position is the district clerk. Have any nominations for district clerk?
I'll nominate Laurie, if she wants it. Okay, if someone else wants it.
Nope.
I'll second that.
I can have, I can train anyone.
Any other nominations for district clerk? Only nomination, only one nomination for district clerk, so we'll still do a vote, though. Jess? Megan?
Laurie.
Lisa?
Well.
Beth? Okay, we're going with the district clerk.
Did you get Lisa in there yet? I'm sorry.
Okay, good. So the district clerk will be probably the biggest thing working on is the election is coming here. Alright.
Mike, before you go further, you could go off with it.
You got it all? Alright.
And Laurie, that election papers are due usually July 27ish.
Yeah, I have a whole timeline. Thankfully, I did it before, so I'm hoping to kind of coast on that a little bit.
They'll give us the taste of it.
Yes, they're really good about it.
I just said congratulations. Congratulations, congratulations, congratulations.
Okay. Now let's, let's, let's start the school committee meeting. Is there anyone here who would like to make a public comment on any of the items on the agenda for tonight? Looks like we have a taker in the back. State your name and town, please.
Jason Carros. Clinton.
Jason, can you come up to the table first, please?
And you're business from Clinton in Boston-Berlin Regional District?
Yes.
Is?
It's related to the sports.
Their school choice.
Are you a school choice parent?
I'm a school choice.
Okay. You have students in the district?
Yeah, I have a ninth grader to Honto, so through Berlin, school choice out of Princeton.
Okay.
I forgot to print what I was going to say, so if you don't mind, I'll just read it up email. This would be a little griefer than a, I'd sent a related email already to the athletic director, Al, with Lisa and Rich Cameron on copy. Because it's related to the student advisory council group that Rich runs, I believe, Rich Cameron. So my daughter, who comes to Toronto as a ninth grader, is on that student advisory council as well. And I believe the meeting was a week ago from Thursday, so about 10 days ago. And a rare teenager who still communicates with me. So she tells me the intricacies and the ins and outs of what she goes through every day, which is good and, after this, she told me she's not talking to me anymore. She, I told her that I emailed some of the admin to just give my similar feedback that she had that day. So she let Rich Cameron and the student advisory council know that she had a different perspective than the rest of the people in that meeting regarding, specifically sixth graders playing on varsity sports teams. The topic may have been related to middle schoolers playing on varsity sports, but specifically in this, what she brought up to me with sixth graders playing for varsity sports. Anyhow. So as I mentioned, she was alone in being opposed to that idea. So she spoke up in the meeting and gave her opinion on why she felt that sixth graders should not play on varsity sports. Her and I have kind of witnessed firsthand over these past couple of years that she's been here, how at least one of the varsity coaches will come into middle school and JV practices and handpick the young middle school athletes. He knows from travel and AAU leads and move them into varsity part-time by mid-season or by the end of the season, anyway. And I've always been involved in all sports. Growing up as a kid, I, my passion with sports, and fortunately, my daughter's passion is academics. So she'll, she'll be a scholar down the road where she doesn't have a lot of interest in sports. She, she just plays basketball because that, she wants to be, you know, play a sport to be popular. But she is very competitive. So when she, when she goes to practice, tries out and plays, she is all in. So it bothers kids like her who are, you know, ninth, 10th, 11th grade, seeing varsity coaches come in and go through sixth and seventh and eighth, some eighth graders, to pull them up to varsity, you know, over the older kids. And I just worry that that's opening that door here. I, I was surprised when my daughter came to sixth, seventh grade here that, that the district allowed middle schoolers to play JV and varsity sports that didn't exist thirty, forty years ago when I was going up down the street. And I know in a lot of schools in Massachusetts, that still doesn't exist. We didn't even have middle school sports. We just had recreation. I love that this district is small, the same size as the town public who I grew up in. And I love that they have middle school sports. And I just wish, in my, in my mind, middle school kids should play middle school sports. And if you have a talented, larger eighth grader who's athletically gifted enough to play high school ball and, and especially if you need an eighth grader to fill a JV or potentially varsity team, I don't have a problem with that either. But I worry that opening the door and allowing sixth graders to play high school sports is a, it seems like a risk to me to the school. You know, I joke with my daughter sometimes that there's sixth and seventh graders coming out when I pick her up at school that look like the size of a preschooler. And I joke about it, but they're, you know, three feet tall, maybe 50 pounds. So no matter how talented they are, to take a young child that's not full grown and put them on a varsity team to potentially play against seven, 17, 18-year-old adults who are my size or bigger, I think is a risk. So I just wanted the school committee and the admin to know that I'm personally opposed to the idea of having sixth graders play high school sports, especially varsity. And that's it, really. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay. Alright, no other public comments. So our next item is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Megan, sorry. Lori and Lisa, would anyone like to say anything about the consent agenda?
Yeah, there's just an edit I wanted to point out.
Sure.
So this was the October 14th. And it was under item seven in MCAS. I just, the last line of that section says masks and it should be screens. Screens, like computer screens or phones, just screens.
Where are you saying that, Jess?
Section, it's right above section eight, under MCAS, the very last line in that section. Says Miss Degleberry brought up, the amount of time the students are at home and time spent on reading and masks over the summer, also something reflected on these screens.
Jen, you good with that?
I would like to amend that agenda with that replacement, screens for the word masks.
A second for that amendment?
Second.
Alright, discussion on the amendment? All favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, any discussion on the rest of the consent agenda? Alright, all in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Alright, so the consent agenda is passed with that one added. Is, is Mr. Dow here?
No.
Okay. Sure, understandable. So next up is superintendent of schools.
Great, thank you. So before I get started, I just want to take a moment to thank everyone for a really great professional learning day today. Our admin team, our curriculum directors worked really hard in this day. If we look at our calendar, the lineup perfectly would have been a day off tomorrow for our veterans day to honor our veterans. A lot of our communities around us, I know, are doing that as well, too. So it really worked out well. But planning a full day of professional learning is, is a lot of work. So I thank our admin and our curriculum directors for that. For those of you that also may not have heard, we started our day, or at least what was on the agenda, was for Dan Yehwa to talk about, about an hour presentation about cleanliness and get better results data when you look at having clean buildings. So we had Dan slated for an hour of that this morning. But what we really did, and Dan was a great sport about it, we ended up having a comedian named Jimmy Cash come in and did an hour presentation. That was absolutely hilarious. That we had our nurses there, we had our teachers, we had our parents, we had our admin, we had our custodians, we had our cafeteria, we had our, our directors. Everyone was fair game and something, myself included, as, as this admin team can certainly say. But it was a really, really fun way for us to start our day. One of the things that you've heard people talk about even in the school committee meetings is culture and trying to improve the culture. If you want to see a, a good culture, everyone laughing this morning and laughing at each other and just really having a good laugh this morning. Jimmy did a great job. If you have an opportunity to look at him on his YouTube channels and things hilarious, like his snow day calls and things regarding being a custodian. He really is a custodian full-time in, in the Western Public Schools. Actually, he was my custodian years and years and years ago. So he was, he did us a great thing today by coming in and being able to cop some time in there. But I, I, I think our admin team could be in good force. We hit it really well. We brought him in the back door and so we were able to surprise him and bring him out. And I don't know if anyone, our admin, want to say, but how, how fun it was to start off our day like that.
Well received by my groups. I loved the, the people who were here and they were mad they had to be here.
He was like a movie star, you know, like everyone taking pictures with him. Like everyone wanting their pictures taken with him and stuff. It was a really good culture building. And, and just credit for Professor Lain, Joe following a comedian, like who does that, right?
Math.
The comedian says, Jimmy says to us, phenomenal, if you have a chance to follow, look at him, what he does. Like, how much longer do I have, Al? And I just said, you know, you got to pretty much wrap it up because we have Joe coming up next to talk about math program, right? So, but he, he did a great job with that as well, too. So I thank our admin. I thank certainly Jimmy and certainly Joe for following up with that as well, too. So it was really a good time. Just got to tell you, I got one of probably about 15 emails, at least, and I haven't checked my emails since five. It says, hi, Al, thank you so much for this morning. Jimmy was great. I think it was exactly what we need to start our day. I think sometimes we need to laugh a little about our daily lives. It also becomes just a little too serious. Have a great day. And that's, that's just one of the emails that we see from our, our staff about today. So I just want to make sure I, I share that. Certainly was camaraderie that was taking place this morning throughout our entire district. So it was great. So thank you, everyone, for that. Right now, I'm going to turn it over to Renee and John, our two curriculum directors, to give an overview of our district MCAS scores. This will be followed by what our needs are, what we're going to be asking you as a school committee that we need budgetarily, right, from looking at our data. That was a focus, the lens we looked at. Here's our data, we've got some growth, we did some, some nice things were happening. But what do we need to make? But what do we need to make sure we continue to grow? And I think one of the things we talked about, you've heard a lot, um is about ELA coaches and stuff. So that's one of the things you'll probably be hearing from um our two curriculum directors on that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Renee um and to John to to join us, please.
Go first, sure.
There's camera.
Can I just plug this in, or I can speak to the slides too?
You can unplug it, you plug it.
Okay. So I had shared um kind of the very detailed um slides the department heads had put together for you. I'm not going to share that again, right? So I'm just, I just summarized some some kind of key takeaways that um I will highlight for you. If you have specific questions, I ask that you don't have like specific depart- departments questions. Um I want to make sure we give the department heads the opportunity to respond appropriately um rather than me just kind of, you know, without all the additional information in front of me responding. Happy to have those answered for you, um but I'll, you know, I'll still get back to you, okay? Um so these are just, you know, our, the takeaways, that that slideshow, I think, was like sixty slides or something, right? Um you might not even had a chance to go through it all. There's some great slides on there, they really put some really great. Like.
Oh, great. A lot of them got a word.
Like, you're my.
We're all in Texas.
It's a company called Worcester that makes the the bubbler, that's why the whole bubbler.
I'm in the Worcester fast, they don't know what you're talking about.
No, no, it's a Worcester thing, it's a Worcester company, just so you know, that's.
All right.
Okay, so this is just in the order of those very comprehensive slides, okay? So I I literally took the takeaways and they started with special education pieces because that historically had been what Tonto had done, so I I did that again. Um so just the takeaways from special education, if you had read those graphs, we're we're still, you know, our our special ed- education students, the population, it's increased slightly since two thousand and nineteen, but it's about thirty percent, it's remi- it's remaining about the same. So the needs, if you looked at that high needs chart, that includes high needs students and IEP students, right? So sometimes we 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 put them all together, right? Because they're all part of a category called high needs. But we have ELL students in there, we have um students with disabilities as well, right? So they're they're put in that, there's two kind of graphs that you were given. The specially designed instruction, these were kind of the bullet points that Janelle really wanted us to convey to you, that we still have to have IEP goals that are based on the standards, right? Because majority of our IEP students are are taking the MCAS. Um data informed instruction, small group instruction, scaffolded instruction, meaning, you know, we kind of pull back, you know, little less support each time, and the consultation with teachers. The next slides were all based on ELA and math content and um we really want to talk about the tenth grade. We saw, Lisa and I sat down today, we looked at these graphs and we said, wow, there's a lot of similarities with tenth grade with ELA and math, okay? And really, that, it's all good news. In tenth grade for the, we we're we're doing great, we continue to do very, very well. ELA and math performance continues to meet or exceed the these state benchmarks. Um we we continue to have sustained growth and we have strong outcomes. Now, I want you to be mindful, right, we skipped ninth grade, right? So it, right, so we have a whole bunch of data for middle school, eighth grade, we have no ninth grade test and then we take a tenth grade test, right? So we have almost like an additional year, right, to prepare, to get to know those students, to figure out what we need to do. I also want you to just be aware, as as each year changes, the students change, right? You'll see right now some data that has preliminary data of where our ninth and tenth graders are. Today, we did a whole deep dive in data, right? After we had the comedian, unfortunately, they had to do data in middle and high school, right? And they're, they said, Renee, hey, come up here, let's take a look where we are in ELA specifically with some of these first, you know, um achievement pieces. We need to do some additional pieces to get them to continue to stay here. And so you'll see that in some of their their asks from the school committee. Uh middle school performance, it it remains steady. Um we we continue to usually, you know, exceed, meet or exceed those those state benchmarks. But we we see the data with an increasing need for targeted instruction tiered supports. This, the teachers have the availability, if you took a look at, um especially the ELA and math, they they were able to look kind of idle item analysis on specific questions. So they're able to see some some of those gaps where they are with specific skills. So we we are really fortunate that we've been given some time in some student schedule to support that, but not in all. And so that would be another ask that we have to try to relook at things in order to get this targeted support there. Again, I'm just noting, no ninth grade MCAS, because it's, I'm I'm sure you're aware, but sometimes it's something we forget. Um so what is the ELA department doing now, right, that they're looking at their data? Um they are determining that three primary areas in the grades need to really, we need to focus more on power standards. There's so much to teach, so little time. It's a common problem throughout all the content areas. Writing, topic development, it needs to be something that needs to be at the forefront. Also talking to the humanities um department as a whole, today we went in and um Lisa and I, we were also talking to history. How can history support, right? They don't, they have a civics exam in eighth grade, but how can they support this writing, right? So we need to talk to them as well. Reading, identifying um literacy techniques. This is, this is going to be coming into play too as we start hoping to do more vertical alignment with the elementary school. Um language, parts of speech, we're we're thinking, we've had a big conversation with department head Peter Dory today, the ELA department. Do we go back to some some grammar pieces in our curriculum that then extended to their writing? Some real, you know, foundational skills, we we may need to add that back in, that's what the data is showing. Um vertical alignment, like we had stated, build an MCAS Google Classroom. Kids, kids do well with that, they're used to those platforms. Um something that, and and I don't want to embarrass her, but give a lot of credit when you see the science scores um to Principal Suquera. She not only, although she's principal now, right, science is still her passion, her love, and she's she's phenomenal at teaching it. Um last year, we recognized that science was going to continue to be something that we needed extra support with and we have built into some of our grant funding that extra support for math and bio. We're going to maybe need to do that for ELA as well, because we have different students each year. So each year may look a little bit different, okay? Math department, again, the the, this department head really was thinking about everything they've been doing. Just, there was a big thank you slide as well, um that I don't, it's not included in here. But a lot of this work, right, has been in place because we've added additional math teachers, okay? Um who's in the room right now, by the way, but I won't embarrass him. But we've been, because of that, we've been able to do additional work in math. Now, what we need to do is make sure that we are having additional offerings at the high school because of our math department. But now we need to say strategically, right, does that extra position, where does that fall in line with our MCAS data, right? It it's so difficult, because we're small, to make sure that we're able to offer the supports and the scheduling that tiered interventions need and the additional programs that our high and AP courses deserve, right? So it's this fine balance, working with it all the time. Um so regularly, regularly meeting to take a look at what those achievement and growths are by the subgroups. Formative assessments, something we've been working on as a district. Um supporting our high achieving students, again, that's part of adding in that additional um position. Incorporate open response questions into assessments, that's just huge, right? Because this is a piece where in math, typically, even our students that are really great in their foundational skills and calculation, the open response questions is is not something of their strength. This is, you know, a cross department, you know, type of piece of work. Um this new curriculum, see, that's being utilized right now from six through eight, which I think you had heard us talk a little bit about, um as we were starting to take a look at the elementary curriculum as well. Um they really feel that this has been a great contributor to the increased math and pass scores. Um middle school spends also a lot of time, again, it's in their schedule. It's in their schedule to look at data, it's in their schedule to have an intervention time, okay? So there's additional time and support for those those teachers and those students to do this work. And it works when you have time, right? Uh sixth grade team, they make effective use of that win block. So that's that intervention time that sixth grade, sixth grade only at this time has dedicated solely for each student. Um science, technology and engineering, um eighth grade, combination of all four content areas, life science, earth science, physical science, technology, engineering. Our STE tests are unique in that we can't allow full cohorts, but we did see that the group was not as successful as previous years, we were not surprised by this. But it caused us to identify areas in literacy that we need to strengthen. Um and and again, there's been, we've had two days of PD now to really kind of look through those item analysis, take a look at those questions that those students, we need to focus our instruction and our intervention on. Biology, again, we were we're pleased, we had no failures. Again, don't want to embarrass her, she spent a dedicated amount of time, she won't come up here and tell you that, targeting a a group of students she knew needed extra support. And she knew that that was the way to do it, right? So but it it, you have to take a look at the data and you need time. Guess what? It wasn't in their schedule, it was after school, right? And and the parents were committed, right, there was personalization there. That's something that we can do in a small school, right? So there's pluses and minuses of that small school piece. Um civics was really wonderful, I I, you know, Mr. Gannam didn't highlight that great article, um but I I'm hoping that the school committee got to see that. Uh we had a a lot of our, um and and that was something that just was sent to us, right? Like, wow, we didn't even know it was coming, right? So we had a lot of great, high performing uh pieces in there, um and civics was one of them. And let me tell you, this eighth grade um class is a quite a, quite a broad span of all different learners, right? So this current ninth grade, this eighth grade class, this is really an accomplishment. I think this also speaks to the fact that this is a project-based class, project-based class. They have to present, they have to work as a group, this is, this is great results. Now, this is new too, right? So this is the first time we've really had data on this, um and and the the teacher should be really, really proud. By the way, she didn't even send us that article, right? It was one of her colleagues that did, that was great, 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 uh something we wanted to highlight. Next steps, um continue to review our standards reports. The eighth grade um review session prior to MCAS. Um the high school biology review sessions after school and Zoom, those continue to be helpful. Um incorporate STE performance assessment tasks for eighth grade. Um implement formative assessments per UDL. Um this is something, we had our second half of our day at Tonto, we had a wonderful speaker today in Merko Chardin, uh really speaking to us on how we look at assessments. And it's not just your summative assessments, it's your everyday formative assessments and what you do to take away from that. Um that's something we'll share with the whole district. It's something, though, that um you know, you know what you need to do, but there's drivers in order to do the work. And that's what we'll need help from you. We need help to make the drivers all work. And unfortunately, a lot of those are budgetary pieces, right? And so that's where sometimes the stumbling happens. Okay, here's the favorite part, this is what you guys asked for. Okay, so a lot of these pieces are specific for math, our Francine Gleason put these pieces together. But they they really speak to all content areas that are um that are assessed on the MCAS. Prioritize staffing to address the growing needs for differentiated instruction interventions um in in math, right, um with math coaches, with interventionists. Uh there is something here at that middle high school with with paraprofessionals. We have many paraprofessionals that spend a great deal of time in one content area and they really become like, you know, specialized in that content. If we can do more of that when we're doing our scheduling and staffing, we can't always do it, but if we can have that at the forefront, the teachers, I heard this not from math, I also heard this from our department head in science, this is critical. I- i- if I was a paraprofessional in in math one day and then biology another day and then I had to go to, you know, AP line, that would be very confusing, right? How am I then going to support that curriculum for those students that need the extra help? Evidence-based interventions, we 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 just don't have that beyond a small pocket in middle school. That's something we really need to look at, especially, I'm telling you, our data is looking good, but we have different students each year, right? We have different students each year, the data continues to change, um and the needs continue to change. Um we don't have any math intervention. Right now, we have a Title I grant, right, um through our SR grant that does contain some very small amount of funding um for reading intervention, but nothing for math. It's something that we really should consider. It doesn't have to be necessarily a full-time position, but something that we may need to consider. Invest in professional learning. Because perhaps some of these pieces are done by staff members that are already here, but we don't have the time or the scheduling to work on that, right? That's the other piece. Um equitable access to materials. Um this is something that there's going to be an audit, I think, with the math department, especially as we start this vertical, you know, alignment. What do we have for manipulatives? What, you know, kind of, what do we have already in-house and what do we need? So that'll be part of the budget process. The problem right now is that where do we have the time during the school year? So do we fund things outside of the school day, whether it's after school or summer work? This may be something um that we need teachers for in order for students to come in and become more fluent. Um this is, this hire an L teacher, an additional L teacher, is something that I know you've heard before, but it's something that is now affecting some of the data, right? Um not that it hasn't before, but because if you look at that high needs chart, that is one subgroup that has continued to rise, okay? Um and so that is something, we still only have two L teachers within the whole district. Um and because of that, for example, I just, you know, just speaking with our L teachers, they're being pulled out of core core content areas, right, like ELA, like math, to get their L services provided, right? So they're missing core instructional tier one instruction, right? Um and and because they're limited in their schedules, right? Not that we know it's best practice, we know it's not, but because of their scheduling. Um so that's something that all departments continue to see as a need. Um substitute teachers, um this is because we are pulling our paraprofessionals out of what they, you know, we may have trained a paraprofessional to work in chemistry. For example, we did that a couple of years ago, right? But then if you don't have appropriate subs, we may not have that same paraprofessional in that chemistry class. Um so that's something that we see throughout, I think, all of the district, but something that they definitely wanted to highlight. Some additional supports, um this has more to do with the ELA, some more science. Putting back into the budget the positions that were lost at Tonto. Um that is part of our scheduling part, right? It's just one part of our scheduling kind of issues right now, right? Because we're down two teachers. Um so that's also taking a a content specialist out of maybe their their core content teaching and teaching another subject away from their licensure. That's also um taking elective times, right? So instead of having an elective teacher teach those electives, there may be a math teacher trying to um teach, you know, some kind of an additional elective there uh instead of those uh those pieces coming back in. We really need to start addressing specific student IEPs and intervention needs during um those pieces. Losing two full-time teachers, I think, has impacted that. We are seeing, I think, of course, all grade levels, like Mr. Gannam had spoke about, um reading and math specialists. We have people that, you know, it was actually, uh Mr. Chardin today said that. Not everybody's going to specialize in every content area. You need to bring the ones that are specializing in the area so that they can really move the data. Um and that is something um that that ELA department feels very strongly about. Just historically, many years ago, so when I came to this district three years ago, I said, I don't understand why there's only forty-five minutes of English Language Arts for six, seven and eight. Um it's something that I hadn't seen before and they, and it, so I was starting to do a little digging. It sounds like, and I, I don't have the the exact date, but it sounds like probably in the move up to this building, maybe shortly thereafter, there was a lot of budget cuts that happened and they went down to just one English Language Arts period. So instead of having kind of your grammar, your writing, right? And then having a literature, your comprehension, all those pieces, right? And you had to say, oh, we don't have the money, here's forty-five minutes, do it all. Where, it's catching up, right? When we're looking at the data, we're seeing it's catching up. Peter Dory is very passionate about this, he said, I knew this was going to happen and here we are. We're seeing bigger gaps, although we're still grow, growing, although our data is still looking good overall, some of those gaps are becoming a little bit wider because we're, we just don't have the time. And especially when we don't have dedicated intervention, especially seven, eight, nine, right? By the time they get to tenth grade, we're seeing that. Um that would be a recommendation, bringing um an additional English teacher back into the middle school. Um that could maybe not just be the middle school, right? We have plenty of ideas to help you out with that, but really, two positions um lost and, you know, they're looking also for an additional piece for ELA. Additional special education teachers, yeah, you've heard that, it's very difficult to address all these needs um with our special education population without certified teachers. um, with our special education population without certified teachers in there, especially as our programming has shifted. Um, we now have, you know, two Bridges classrooms, so the population has changed a bit and, um, that is still also a need. Um, but we were able to do quite, if you really take a look at those slides for math, the amount of movement that we're able to do with one more teacher with math, significant, right? Um, so it, it's, it's like, it's, it's worth that, you know, extra FT if we can get it in there. There's so much we can do and, and we, we were able to really accomplish great work the last couple of years with that. So thank you together, thank you together, that could work too. So thank you for your support. Um, any specific questions, please write them down. Um, let me know what they are, I'll get those to the department heads. They can either come and address you at the next meeting or I can, you know, however you want to address that through the chair, we can get that information back to you, okay? So I know you might not have looked at all the slides before, but feel free to dig deeper in them and if there's specific questions, just let us know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There's, there's a lot of information we're giving you, a lot of data that we put in the drive that talks about really good things that have taken place. I, I, I know I shared that article with you, that was in the TG about the success and us being recognized across, uh, I should have, thanks Renee for, for catching me on that. That is something we should be very, very proud of, right? Um, we're seeing some really nice growth here and I definitely want to continue to see that growth. We're also recognized, um, this year, in the year that we're doing better than pre-COVID, right? As a district, we, we want to do even better than that, right? And so you're hearing loud and clear, uh, that we need some additional staffing to really work on those intervention groupings that take place. The other part, I'm going to be talking to you, this summer is still coming. I'm going to be increasing, um, working with Aaron and principals, we're going to be increasing their pay for subs. We need subs, we need people in our buildings to cover. We have teachers that are out and when we don't have coverage, but we're pulling our powers, we're pulling other people to cover them. Um, Jen has done some homework for, for, for me and really called all the other districts around. I've spent a little layer to see what they're paying for subs as well too. So we're trying to be a little more competitive to see if we can get more people subbing for that. So that's our key piece as well too. Uh, thanks Renee.
Yes.
Great. All right. Thanks, I don't know, I'm going to follow all that, I don't have as many slides. Um, and I've done this, the way I've done it for years and years. This is my last MCAS presentation. I wanted to be as consistent with tradition as possible. So I'm going to use some of the same things, assessment thoughts. MCAS testing does not measure the worth of children or teachers or schools. I say this every year. It's one task at one point in time gives us a snapshot of where we are relative to standards and students in our schools across the Commonwealth. And then finally, what terrible lighting. What each, as the MCAS assessment can do is point out patterns of performance and you're hearing that in the middle high schools and areas where we need to improve. Okay? Um, we'll start with language arts, because it's the most important thing we do. I've repeated that a thousand times. Uh, these are grades, grade three scores. Uh, in talking with Rob in Boylston, superintendent, we decided to focus on one school district rather than separate schools. So these are our district goals or our district results. For the MCAS test last year in ELA, um, our kids scored 253% of the available points. And you can see this is the meet or exceeds graph. It's relatively flat. Right, it's down slightly, um, relative to the state because the state's always at about 44%. Uh, we came down a little bit this year.
Looks like the state's going up there, John.
Well, going up, let's see, from 42 to 43.
Any improvement?
Somebody has to. Um, grade four, uh, more successful, 63% of the possible points. Um, and our meet or exceeds percentage was, again, essentially, it was the same, 56 and 56. And again, to Mr. Totten's point, this tape went up four points, good for this team. Um, in grade four, you get a measure of growth for the first time. This is our grade four growth graph. You can see that we outperformed the state in terms of the meet or exceeds. We're pretty much average in terms of student growth. This is grade five ELA. Good year in grade five, uh, 63% of the total points. And you can see, uh, we jumped up as a district from 56% meet or exceeds last year to 64% this year. Um, I have to pause here, we not doing individual schools, but I did promise Peter Dory that I would recognize one person. Um, some of you who've been around a while have heard me talk about, you know, we should get 80% meet or exceeds every year, yada, yada, yada. Um, my fifth grade ELA teacher, um, Tia Kugler. Uh, Tia, two out of the last few years has gotten 80% of her kids to meet or exceeds, which is just phenomenal. Um, so Peter said, if I didn't say anything, he's going to punch me in the nose. And I'm scared of Peter, so.
She's a great teacher?
She is a great teacher. Um, so you can see, and that's reflected in the, uh, growth chart here, well above the state in terms of meet or exceeds and above the state in terms of student growth percentages. Math, Mr. Foolery. Um, here's our grade three math results. 68% of the possible points and a meet or exceeds of 67%, which is good for us. And, and well worth noting, we did a lot of work last year around math and I think it really showed up. Um, you're, wow, we, we wouldn't have sized it too much because then there's grade four. Uh, 59% of the available points. You can see for the past couple of years, um, our meet or exceeds number has dropped. Um, part of that, and this is where I'll talk about it, because we're such a small school district, if you have a significant number of kids, kids for whom this test is not appropriate, it tends to drag down your score. Um, so for example, in fourth grade last year, a third of my fourth grade, a third of the kids are on significant academic plans. Um, it's not an appropriate test for them. Um, and as if they wanted to prove it to me, none of them scored meet or exceeds, um, which kind of drags the whole thing. Not for lack of effort, but that's kind of where it is. You can see that our meet or exceed number is high, but our growth is lower, lower than the state, which is not good. Uh, this is grade five then. Um, and again, you can see 58% of possible points available. Our score then dipped, um, from 69% last year to 51% this year. Wow, the state went down a little bit, not as much as we did. And you can see again, meet or exceeds were okay, but our growth is a little below average. There's all of that. This is what I wanted to point out, and this goes back to my point about, um, students with academic needs. Um, we heard a lot of talk last year and Mrs. Fitzpatrick would, um, back this up. This is that indicator three data where you look at the number of students with IP's who've scored proficient meet or exceeds as opposed to the number of students without IP's and then the gap in proficiency. So you can see for language arts, in third grade it was 46%. The gap in fourth grade, it was 61%. And then in fifth grade, 49. You can see students without IP's do reasonably well. My kids with IP's, not so much. In math, very similar numbers. Um, grade three rocked it in math, 80% of them, meet or exceeds, 65 and 62. But you can see that gap is very large still. Um, and it's, you know, it is what it is. For some kids, it's not an appropriate test, but not for all kids.
So John, before you go there, so our job as educators is to educate all of our students, right?
Yep.
And we, we talk about the training that we're going in through UDL for formative assessments and right? How do we individualize UDL, universal design for learning, right? The way Renee learns might be different from the way Lisa and John and I learn, but yet the MCAS test is the same test given for all our students, right? So sometimes not a match for all of our kids, but it's certainly data that we look at, conversations that we're having today, we're rich, um, at our schools about looking at this data and how can we educate all of our kids as well? Um, but it's, it's a fact, right? This test is the same test we give for all our students, even though during the day, if a teacher gave one test for exam exactly on our kids, we say to them, you know, come up with a formative assessment, come up with universal design for learning, other ways of testing our kids and teaching through our kids. But yet the state says, this is the assessment we give you at this time.
They're setting a bar and that's fine.
That's correct.
As long as we understand what the bar means and, you know, how fair is the bar really?
Our job is to educate all of our students.
To the best of their ability, which means holding them accountable. And that sometimes is a real challenge. Um, my list of what we need, how can you help is not nearly as long as my colleagues at the middle high school. Support for teachers. We need to support our teachers better. We need to maintain our math coach. We desperately need to add a literacy coach. The most important thing we do is teach children to read. It's true all the way across the board. If they can read, everything else can be fixed. If they cannot read, we cannot help them in other areas. But we don't have a literacy coach. It's crazy.
That specializes in being literacy giant.
Right.
That has that certification, Renee has that certification, right? Not in the district, right? When you think about students that are graduating from colleges and universities to become teachers, they have one class for learning how to teach reading. One is all they take, right? Imagine that, right? When they're, especially those primary grades where kids are learning how to read, because then they can read to learn, like, we, we need experts in this field to be able to help us out that have the certifications of reading specialists, that know the science of reading, to teach our kids from where they're at and how to read.
And to pick up that, you know, read to learn, you used, you old saying used to be, you read to learn and then you learn, or you learn to read and then you read to learn. I think you're hearing it from the middle high school, that's not true. We're still teaching kids to read in sixth and seventh and eighth grade. That's part of the help that they're asking for. So we need to do that. Um, we need to support our special education students. And it's so ironically, Mr. Gannam, I already brought this up. Um, there are kids who, for whom this test is not appropriate. There are other students in my school and I'm sure in Boylston as well, for whom the test is a challenge, but not impossible. You, you get kids who'd rather not write a whole paragraph, but if that are supported, they might be able to. We don't support our needy students to the level that we should. We need to add, um, I know Rob's talked about another teacher, but we, um, it's a special education teacher that we need along with a more effective use of administrative special encourageers. They drive that practice. They drive lesson planning and goal setting for these most needy students. We need people who, you know, I got Sherry Trent one day a week in my school. It's, you know, it's not enough. Mrs. Fitzpatrick, you know, Fitzpatrick comes in too, but you know, she's got like 7,000 other things to do. And then finally, um, we need to support our elementary school teachers, um, because we need to give them time to plan and work together. That was the conversation, PD day in the afternoon for us today was a discussion around ELA for next year. Um, and looking forward in terms of ELA programs and where do we get better? We looked at strengths and weaknesses. What they said over and over and over again was, we need time to have these conversations. Our professional development for this year is done. It's November. We have no time and unlike my friends at the middle high school, my teachers get four prep periods a week. There's one day when they teach from 8:20 to 3 o'clock. If they want to go to the bathroom, they need somebody to come in in their room. It's madness. We've got to do a better job. And I know all these things that you're hearing from me and from Renee, all cost a million, trillion, zillion dollars. Um, and I think we have to be honest with ourselves in terms of where are our priorities? The towns are up against it, I get that. But we can do better for our kids than we're doing now. As well as we do, a lot of what we do well is based on zip code. We have great parents. We have kids that get read to at home. But for the kids who really need us, we're stretched much too thin. So that's my little, my little rant.
Before you go, could you go, you say support elementary teachers by giving them meaningful time to play. Motion to give them more time to play and work, seconded and approved. Like, we would do that. Specifically, how does that happen?
Well, it starts with.
You have more teachers, more parents, more subs.
We eliminated a day of specials.
Tell us, what is it specifically?
PD days, do you want more PD days?
I want more PD days where they get to talk to each other. I want a fifth special, so if they have time to talk.
More PD days or more half-days?
See, I would have gone back to half-days. The challenge with half-days, we learn this relationship with other two. One is that people consider school babysitting. So the big complaint was, who's going to take care of my kid on the half-day? You know, if the really good school districts can do half-days, we should be able to do half-days. And this is all, by the way, easy for me to say because I won't be here.
Yeah.
The other challenge with half-days is that it's a ton of planning, way more than I thought. Joey was great last year, year in math. But that was like half of it each day. And then there was, what do we do with the other half? How are we planning meaningfully for the other half? And when it was me doing all the other things that I had to do and plan, that became more, way more challenging than I thought it would be.
And, and I, I would respectfully disagree because I think our professional learning is continuing all year. We have a second faculty meeting each month that is that our teachers are working together, right? And that's supposed to be the focus of universal design for learning, uh, teachers collaborating with them. That is why we have that second faculty meeting. I know that you might not necessarily agree, but that's the focus of that meeting.
So, so. It's not happening.
So more time, right? Time, not, time's not free, but half-days, more PD days.
Yep.
It's, it's not really going to show up in a budget.
That's free.
Well, it better show up in pain for you guys because you get the same complaints you got last year.
Sure, we'll get that, but is that the only thing? Is it the coaches, the specialists, the, do you need more teachers? Do we need another teacher at BMS? Do we need one at BES? What do we?
Well, I know BMS has a separate pop because they've, yeah, they've always had one, one grade of two. And I think this year you're done, right, Rob?
BES has a, a need for a fifth grade next year.
Yeah, so there'd be, there'd be that additional. Part of the challenge, Mike, is that.
That small class is graduating at BES.
Right. But more in terms of like giving them more time, you get to the middle high school, you know, they've got a lot more flexibility, you know? They're scheduled for little blocks here and there, but they've got seven and eight periods a day that are free. Not free, they're working, they're working hard, this is not criticism. But they have a good deal more time. The illusion, the mistake we make in our thinking is that elementary teaching is easy. And anyone who thinks that it's easy to teach in an elementary school should break themselves down and run a first grade for a day.
I would never, I would never say that.
I would never say that.
Exactly. I mean, just coach the team, yeah.
So we'll have, we'll have specific things to look at in this district.
Yeah.
See, if you ever want to validate the, about the middle school and the high school as opposed to, uh, of elementary, when people that bring it in for county brings me for subbing, they want to sub in the middle and high school, right? Trying to find subs at the elementary level is, 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 is a lot of work to do. I think when you have a C, our admin team will be asking for you later on, um, when we're talking about that, that we're looking at that elementary level, there's some skills, technology skills that we're going to come back and revisit that we're seeing that our kids don't have those keyboarding skills that they need, right? To be able to work on the computer, take the MCAS.
I mean, we eliminated tech and a reading teacher last year. So I mean, that's, that's the best special we have.
We didn't know where our budget is and we still, we eliminated two teachers at the high school as well too that make our budget work, right? So, so that's why we, we are completely understandable that the school committee supports the decision we make. But it's our job also to go to the towns and all of our community to go to the towns and our teachers to go to the towns and help us fight that cause because anytime we're asking for something more, respectfully, Kristin April say, what are you taking off the plate, right? So we know that, um, and that.
Yeah.
Darned if you do, darned if you don't, and we have to make our decisions.
That's right. So all this, we, no one, I think, no one in this room would disagree that we need all of this, right? All this plus more. But how are we gonna be able to afford it as well?
Al, can I ask a quick question? So that reading coach, I thought that was in the budget.
We had one. It never got rehired for mine.
It never got rehired, but it's actually in the budget. And then Boylston put another fifty thousand dollars in.
No, it's not in the budget.
Okay, Boylston put another fifty-ish thousand dollars, and I thought we were using them for literacy. There was an additional, we voted on it in July.
There is money available for, for BES.
Right, so I thought that we were gonna use that for some type of literacy support. I don't know if that has happened yet, or, but I mean, it sounds like this might be something that you're just telling us you need help.
So when we have on the December ninth meeting, like John just said, we'll have all the specifics for the, what you need, what is the cost, what the budget's gonna look like.
I just wanna clarify, so I know last year we did not have a reading coach, and it was not hired last year, but we had one the year before. Is that correct, the twenty-two to twenty-three? So if you look at the ELA scores at the lower level, they all went up. Or leveled. Grade four ELA went up. And grade three stayed level. Grade five went up in ELA too. So, I mean, I think there's support to say that it does make a difference.
And we've heard it loud and clear from our teachers as well about that. Our admin team is saying we need that. We need to have those people that are specifically trained in teaching how to read.
Right.
That, that, that.
It's critical in elementary.
So timestamp for this meeting, about six fifty-eight AM to seven thirty-six. People can watch this and prepare for coming to talk about the budget next month. Because I know that one of the big complaints is nobody ever knows when we're gonna talk about the budget. So we're talking about it next month on the ninth. And this is a pretty good segue into that meeting of what we're gonna need, why we're gonna be seeing. And this is just start, by the way, we're, we're in November, just in the start of November. We're starting to see things, right? That we're gonna say we're gonna need for next year. Some of the things we put in place, we don't even, we don't even know that. We don't even know what we know yet. But one thing that we're hearing from the elementary people is they need to have some skill sets in terms of technology. We're absolutely seeing that need there take place.
I'm curious, like, you know, we done about the fifth grade teacher who's consistently getting her readers up to eighty percent in ELA. I'm curious, are her skills like washed? Or like, does she coach other teachers? Like, you know, identifying amazing educators with, from within, can other people could probably benefit from what, how she's teaching the curriculum that is technically the same across the board?
And that's what happened today, right? Those teachers all working together, right? We broke them from primary to, to, in the secondary and the elementary, like sharing their skill sets, right?
But, if I'm.
Joe, please.
To your point, I think we could really have like a model classroom, right? We can have model classrooms across the district. But that's a whole piece of culture that needs to get worked in. When we don't have days across the district, right? We do have this second faculty meeting, I can appreciate that, but that's building based, right? So in order for fifth grade in Berlin to have that opportunity with fifth grade in, in Boylston, right? Though those additional professional development days need to be thought about again. The calendar, I think, needs to be thought about in a different light. I can very much appreciate, I'll be very blunt, that the planning, we weren't prepared to know what that really looks like and to be effective last year. We also didn't have the support of a specialist in place to facilitate that professional learning, right? This is a different understanding now, right? So we did a one-off year, it maybe wasn't the best. And now it's like, geez, we could have learned from that and implemented, right? So nobody's fault, right? Just but when we're looking at that calendar for next year, really something to consider because it takes time, because we have to train, we have to have a whole culture shift in order to get teachers in one another's classrooms. It's a great way, and to be honest, high performing districts do it and low performing districts do it. They take those model classrooms and they learn from one another. But they have a plan based in, and they have time. So that, that's something that I think would be excellent. And I think they're being willing, right? If they have that time.
But it's even coverage for that, right? So having that model classroom for people to go and visit while she's teaching, right? We're trying to develop that culture. John and Rod and Renee are doing walkthroughs through our classrooms. But for me to be able to say, honest conversation, the fifth grade teachers in Boylston, we're gonna give you the next three hours off traveling over to go sit in that fifth grade classroom in Berlin. We need coverage for that to happen, right? All of that is what we need to take place. But it's gonna cost us money for subs to be able hire them for the day and say, okay, fifth grade, we're gonna spend it in here for three hours. And three hours, let the fourth grade teacher go visit in Boylston. But they're doing well in that fourth grade class. All of this is what we want.
The other piece of this is elementary teachers, I can only speak to elementary teachers, are, as a rule, not forever, but as a rule, uncomfortable holding themselves up as role models.
Oh, I know that good.
It's, it's unfortunate, but it's true. And that fifth grade teacher is a perfect example of, she didn't want me to mention her success rate. Part of the, part of the reason that coaching is different than like tutors, you know, highly paid tutors, is that you want coaches who will go in, and I know Mr. Floyd and I have done some of this, and have that difficult conversation that doesn't get back to the boss. It's not a value in it, it's just, hey, you might wanna think about, you can see manipulation when you do that lesson. You might wanna not go right to the algorithm when you do that lesson. We need people who can have and speak truth to teachers in a way that they can hear, that they don't mind threatening. Because that's how, that's one of the ways you grow.
It goes back to the culture, right? But like, you've heard me say, everybody needs a coach, right? And we're not used to that in our community, right? We used to say, I used to say, talk, ready to even have a coach. Someone's training and working with them to get them for debt. We, we're slowly moving in that direction so people can feel comfortable up to that. Honest conversation though, right? You're right at the last budget, so some of our teachers got up and said, what do you wanna cut? And I said, cut out coaches, right? Because they don't realize and appreciate the value of them. And they're so important to be able to help our teachers and work with our teachers and work with our admin. It's culture, as Renee said.
Thanks, guys. Yeah, Jess, go ahead.
One more question, Renee. So you mentioned two thousand thirteen, there's been like a steady decline. And there was a, you know, we cut some things for ELA.
I don't know that this specific year. I was, we were kind of looking historically, like, when did this happen? And I was, I was told probably about when the build, like when the new building came in, there was some, you know, so it could have been, but I don't hope me on that.
Another interesting coincidence, like it was around two thousand thirteen, that's when smartphones started having apps and became, had algorithms to be more addictive and on stopped being tools. So it's just an interesting thing to point out that we don't read as much anymore too.
Yeah, absolutely, right.
So they gave you some good data, you have a lot of data there. If there's specific questions, please email either Renee or John, and we'll sort of get that information, data to you. And just one, one last clarification. Our teachers are all working hard, both at the elementary school and the middle high school. It just looks a little different, right? What their days look like. But everyone is extremely working hard. It was starting to see some good results up there. But we need to continue and look at, have a hard look at some of those things that we're not getting success in right now. Thank you, Renee. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you to all the educators.
Yes. Al, you have something to say about buses? Yeah, sorry. So my next thing is just about that Beacon Connect app. I just wanted to give a little clarity about that. I've gotten a couple of comments on this, so we finally got that app in place. I should say, the bus company finally got that app in place. It's called Beacon Connect app. The app tracks the bus, not the individual students, okay? It tracks the bus. But I guess one of the things that we heard, and we had a look into it with Joe and myself and Aaron and Jen, you give it one number, right? That's the first number they call in terms where you can program in when you're going into Beacon Connect app. They drew that information, we shared with them Power School information. Power School, when you're putting your information in Power School, we don't control this, so let me be clear about that. They ask for the father's name first, then the mother's name second. It's just the way Power School's set up across this country. So we gave that information to Beacon Connect. The first number that was drawn was the father's number. So there is nothing else there besides the information from, from Beacon. And I know parents were asking us, why is it my husband's are the father and not the mother? Just as the way it came through, through Power School. Joe, am I missing anything with that? Aaron, am I missing anything with that?
Yeah, just if people have issues, use the Beacon Connect email.
Right.
That's your first line.
And everyone received home, as well as all of you received at School QD, this app that came through that we shared out, it's really, they're, they're the, they're the first line. If there's any issues, they're not getting resolved with that. But certainly let our, our principals and our admin assistants know about that. But really, they're the ones to be calling. But so far, we've sort of, you know, I know those little things here.
What significance of the telephone number? Is that who's, who was called and his emergency?
So. That's how you sign up.
So everyone realized, like, all the moms got on and were like, that's the primary phone number, but the first number that was in the system was all of the dads.
Yeah, they couldn't get into the app with that dad number. Yeah, so it was all, it all went through the Power School, and it just drew the dad's number first on that. Okay? And that's my report to School QD. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, up next, Jess, do you have an update for your School QD?
No, I think we've not discussed another meetings where we, those superintendents are.
Okay. Megan?
Yeah, we met and we talked about the SRO, or potential for an SRO. So the majority of the meeting was a public comment session. And then we kind of left it as, Al let us know that, I guess, there was a survey question on the district improvement plan survey that went out that was asking families, you know, community members, how they felt about an SRO. So we're hoping to get some feedback off of that. But really, no resolutions drawn, just a lot of information given. Both police chiefs spoke, both are in favor of it, and the public comment was mixed. There was some in favor, some not in favor. Obviously, the admin team was not in favor for the reason of the budget and just the funding. So at the end of the day, I think it's something that we can, you know, decide if we put something in the budget. But really, I think it kind of is something that has to go through the towns.
Did you get a number on how much I'll be?
We did not, he did not present a number, right? No. They had all different ideas. So one of the ideas was, you know, to do some, we talked about a phased approach. So maybe you just do something part-time. In Berlin, I guess they have a dare officer, which is Officer Goody. He comes in and he does a dare program at the Berlin Elementary School. We don't have that in Boylston, so we talked about maybe seeing, pricing that out. But one of the things we did draw the conclusion of was that in Boylston, that had, it had to go through the town budget. That was how the Boylston chief was adamant that it needed to be something that was on the town budget. It worked out with the town, and then they would bill the school district back for that. So there were no prices discussed at that meeting.
So the police said they would bill a school for the time that they put in?
That was how Boylston had framed that if the town agreed to fund an SRO. The point was, he wanted the officer to be on the town's budget in the event that if, you know, obviously, the school leadership changes, he doesn't, he doesn't want that position to be at the whim of the school committee or the schools. He wants that position to be reporting in through the police and, you know, part of the police budget.
Regarding the billing back to the school, did you get a number for that, Al?
There were no numbers discussed. It was literally just to, I think it was more to get information from the police chiefs on how it would work and if they were interested and gauge if the public is actually interested. And honestly, it was mixed. So I think we ended it with taking a look at the survey before we decide if it's an item that we want to advocate for.
Let me clarify with Chief Schartner that the school is not paying for Officer Goody. This is, so what we would be asking for is through the town. So to, and then we discussed about even replicating the whole situation, which is not even an option.
Right, and I don't think there, we'd have to, Aaron would have to sit and work to get a, a number because this person would do training on the police side, right? So those hours and, and the, the individual could work for the police force. They're not gonna be working full-time for the school district. It would be, you know, school hours or whatever is needed. So they'd have to figure out if they do it on an hourly rate or how that's worked out. That would have to be something that was sparsed out. But I think the first step is going back to, is this something that towns are able to put on their budget?
And is this. Firming up what we're asking.
Yes.
Specifically, like, what are we asking for? Because you can't price something if you don't know what we're.
Right, and we need to gauge the interest in the community. I mean, we've, it's just kind of worked out perfectly that Renee and Lisa, I guess, I'd had no idea that was on the survey. Because somebody asked, somebody in public comment actually said, why don't we survey and see if there actually is interest? We did it for them before. And she said, you know, there was very little parent turnout. So, and then Lisa said, hey, it's already on the survey. That went out.
So.
It hasn't gone out yet.
Yeah.
Oh.
So we're, we're finalized, so we haven't had a second, right? But the last couple of days, so the strategic plan's set, no, it's set to go out this week, right?
It was set to go out, yeah.
No, we're, we're ready to have it go out. We're looking for that final front page telling parents about it. But the question is added on there. I gotta thank Lisa, myself, Renee spent hours and hours going over the questions about, and looking at those questions as a parent, as a student, as an alumni, as an admin. But also, we had to do a test group of people. So we're not gonna do some of the surveys. So we set it out and said, okay, we haven't any glitches here. We're working that out as well too. There is a question added about cell phones, right? About getting input on that. Question added on about, also about the school resource officer. Because we're hearing from pockets. We had a meeting on a Thursday or Tuesday at five o'clock, right? We had a small group of people show up. Let's really see what our community feels about this, and all that data will be helpful for us with climate, culture, and everything that goes on with strategic plans.
I mean, also, so like, Goody's providing like dare. And so I'm curious, like, I mean, Boylston used to have a dare officer back in the nineties. And so I'm curious, like, is there a separate question?
Yeah, so, so just for clarity, I could be out of my lane here, right? There's no dare anymore, right? He's using.
He just used that term.
Yeah, so fear hasn't been around, so.
What is, what is it actually called? Do you know, John?
I, I think he's using the dare curriculum still, which is fine. But there's really no dare curriculum. Yeah.
But he's just going in and, he's definitely going in and giving a program or something like that in, at BMS. So we did talk about, you know, I left it with John that, you know, we did, or the police chief from Boylston, is there a potential to do something like that in Boylston as well? Again, obviously, the school committee would have to approve that and want that. But all that would filter through the town budget. That would not come back to the school's budget if they went and did something at the elementary school. That would be on the police budget, which is what the chief wants.
And I, I spoke to both town managers, right? And, and the message to, to me and sharing with you guys is, what are you taking off the plate, right? So what, what, what else, you know, herewise that we're looking for adding on? But I think the first thing to, like everyone said, let's get that survey out, get some feedback from everybody in the entire community, what they feel about having a school resource officer in our schools, a true school resource officer. And if that's not what you want, is there some sort of other method look? And we really phrased the question well, so to get parent input on it. But there's the question that's added on that, that strategic plan survey.
Can people free type responses on that?
Yes, there is a spot to, to free response on a lot of things.
So people should, if people feel strongly about things, that's a perfect forum for people to, if they're unable to make the school committee meetings, or they don't feel comfortable writing an email, this is a perfect forum.
We spent hours and hours going over each question to make sure we're able to really get the, the pulse of what's going on in our community. So we're not just having these one-offs here or there. People say, all these people feel this way, here's an opportunity, right? We, we want that. We, we even did that with our strategic plan, even the gen, do a spot analysis. We need people to show up for those things and, and give us feedback. So we didn't have many people show up, as we know. Very limited amount of people showed up at a strategic plan. Renee, not to quick on the spot, but very, how many people?
For the community forum?
Yeah.
Maybe twelve.
For our, and educators, how many?
Six.
Educators?
Six. So we're, we're not, we're hearing that all this stuff is happening out here from School QD, right? This is all happening, people are feeling this way, we need your input. So we get, maybe people couldn't attend those strategic planning meetings, that we had them at night. We had them every event that we possibly could, after school, different locations. So now we're gonna do the survey. So here's the survey. Please give us your information. Please give us your feedback so we can have that.
Yeah, is the survey anonymous?
It, it's anonymous to us, it does not go to us.
It goes out through, so it'll go out in several different ways. It will go out through the school kind of, school like school messenger, like as a blast. But it'll also go out through the town's email databases. So like, for example, if you sign up in Berlin or Boylston to get all the notifications of town meetings, that becomes an email database, right? So it goes out in blasts. I don't think, I don't think it retrieves the email back. And if it did, it wouldn't come to us, it would go, this is an outside provider, remember? So this is teaching, learning lines, right? So they are sending the survey, we're not sending it, right?
You can't see whose power. Yeah, so I think this is a great forum for people. If they have thoughts and they aren't comfortable with putting their thoughts in an email or coming and speaking at a meeting or showing up at a meeting, maybe they want them heard anonymously. This is perfect.
Yeah, and we're working, this is what they do for a living, do surveys, right? We, you know, we learned through COVID, the way you write a survey, the way you write a question out, right? Might elicit certain responses. This is what they do for a living. We worked on it for hours, we gave it to them. And they're like, okay, let's maybe check this and check this. So we're not looking to get a certain response from people. But we hire this company to work with us. So we'll be, and that cover letter is on me. I'll be working on that tomorrow, so we will get that out on Wednesday.
Thank you for the time.
All right, thank you Lisa for that. You did some great work in that. There's no policy update either. Anyone want to make another public comment? Second chance to public comment? Jump up. Come on. Future agenda items, I want to mention one. So a couple of weeks ago, town administrator Boylston reached out, asked if we could get a meeting for them to tell us about the budget. The dates they threw out didn't work. There were a lot of superintendent search dates over mixed with them. So I, they also didn't include Berlin in that. So I sent an email to both Berlin and Boylston inviting them to the December 9th meeting because that's when Aaron is going to be giving us a first look at the budget. It might not be the full budget, but it's a first look, right? According to your schedule. I heard back from Berlin, the town administrator is going to come, possibly some chairs. I haven't heard back from Boylston yet, but I expect to. So they're both invited to the December 9th meeting to talk about the budget. Along that, budgetarily wise, the regional agreement wise, they're looking at that budget wise. So they want us to keep revisiting this regional agreement. So I know you said you heard it at one of the town meetings that you went to or heard. Like this is a conversation that's happened. They want us to be looking at this regional agreement as we should.
Yeah, I just want to mention again, I mentioned last time about January community night, interest generation and cell phones. I just want to kind of put it again back on the agenda in December. Or hopefully after the superintendent searches ended for a January event to hopefully catch parents, maybe fifth grade or fourth grade before spring and looking towards going up to the middle school, think about cell phones.
All right, and I would just add to that, one of the things that we're learning about and working on, we're not even here, AI, right? So we haven't even talked about that as a school committee. There's a lot of school committees and hopefully these next couple of days, we're going to learn a lot more about it, about policies that we're going to be asking school committee to come up with with artificial intelligence. I know they have some conversations that are happening with Renee and Lisa, but we're, the kids are further ahead with AI than we are right now. And we really need to be looking at that. It's not going away, so.
I mean, the state has a task force as well that's working on things.
Business items, cover motion for the approval of the graduation requirements.
So moved.
Megan?
Second.
Lori? This was in the drive. Saying, Al, do you want to give a little note on this? I know she presented.
This was the first read from last time?
This was the first read from last week, uh, last month, yep.
Is there any change from what was given to us for the first read, Lisa?
There, so I think, I did submit a, a letter identifying the graduation requirements without the MCAS requirement. So it really is a decision between, do you want to retain the MCAS as a requirement or do you not want to retain the MCAS? So there are two, there are two proposals. If we retained MCAS as a graduation requirement, we would be the only district in Midwatch to do so because of the vote, you know, the November vote. We retained it because we knew that it would impact anybody who's graduating. And so we were bringing this forward, you know, at this time. And so that's really the difference.
And your recommendation?
And my recommendation is to, is to not have it because currently on the docket for the state, the governor is putting forth information on EOCs and of course exams as opposed to having MCAS. So that, that is the legislation that's coming down the line.
All right, so the letter you gave us does say your recommendation is to exclude MCAS. That's what the motion was for, that's what the vote is for.
To approve that letter?
What's that?
To approve her letter?
To approve the graduation requirements, which she is suggesting would exclude MCAS. So a vote yes is to remove MCAS from graduation requirements. Any questions, Lisa? Just clarity, we're still going to be giving the MCAS. The importance of still of that. We need to make sure all of our students and families take it. It will be a data point, right? And scholarships that go along with it. And the money that comes to us from the federal government because of that. John Adams and Abigail Adams, scholarships that go along with that.
Make sure your kids know it's still important and it'll pay off late, hardly down the line.
That's right. And that's why when they're sitting for that MCAS, then they realize it's still important. All right, anything else, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Okay, the motion passes. The approval of the new math program, are we calling this the new math program? Or we just, what are we calling this? Joey, you want to join us? We're not calling it the new math program though, Joey, right?
Yeah, what are we, what are we approving? What are we approving? Could I have a motion to approve the adoption of the iReady math program?
All right, Beth and Lori can provide it. Everybody, I think you guys got a chance to take home some materials, take a look at them. Math scholars want to talk about this?
You guys did a lot of work and I trust all the work that you guys put into it, so.
I will say, we, we had a chance to look at it today with the full staff. And we, so I've presented to a couple of committees at this point. So you've heard my spiel about how we really tried to make sure that it was from the ground up. We had the teachers make the rubric. We had the committee look at the rubric to measure all of these. We started with curate, which is the status that you have to pick from this program in order to apply for certain grants. And that's only going to be widened as we go further. I think the things that really, the takeaways for me were that we had kindergarten through fifth grade all unanimously behind this program. Then when we took it to the middle school and high school, we had them look at it, they also were supporting it. They felt it was more in line with the way that they expected the students to reach them. So for me, if I could get kindergarten and high school to agree on the same program, felt like it was a good match. I think it really, you guys talked about the reading and writing up there a lot. This program really puts a lot more emphasis on the student discourse. Something we've talked about in PDs in years past is about taking sort of the the traditional approach of the teacher being in the front of the room and talking for the whole time. It really spends a lot of time removing that piece and having the students talking to each other and having the students explore and learn. So for that many people, today we did a PD with all of the teachers, giving them a chance to explore it. And overall, it felt really, really positive. There were a lot of really good comments. People really digging into it and looking, so they, they seem excited. And that's always a good feeling when you get people excited about math, so. Overall, I think it's, it's, and I followed up the comedian. So I really, it was not an easy sell. But I think overall, if that many people are excited about it, there's really, because I've had the math committee, the teachers who served on that as active participants, they were going around and asking questions. We had a lot of, a lot of engagement with it, which was great to see.
I see that today. Thank you. Final comments? All right, the motion's on the table, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? All right, that motion passes. So that means we're teaching some math. Thank you. We'll be working with Aaron to put that in the budget. So you'll see that coming out of you through this math program. Again, you don't prove individual books, but we're doing a curriculum across the entire district. We want the approval from school committee and teachers, obviously. And then we'll be going to the budget process and seeing if we're being able to afford that. Put it in the budget. Thank you. These next two items, Al, are you suggesting these to be done separately or as one because they are embedded in each other? I would hope, well, we'd like to do it as one because it is the student handbook, right? We know that there was a little conversation, I'll say little, about the athletic handbook piece of it. We heard public comment today as well too. We've had a number of meetings with coaches as well too. We appreciate, we had a meeting here recently with all of our coaches that were invited with our athletic director. Lisa, if you want to join us up here as well too. All of our coaches, including Beth Mancini, by the way, who is one of our volunteer coaches, coaches cheerleading. And by the way, just for the record, because I've heard, right? Small community, she doesn't get paid, her, it's volunteer. She did all the ethics and reported it. There was no conflict of interest. So we received that information both to the chairman and myself. So I'm sorry you had to go through all that whole process to do that for a volunteer job, that you had to go do all that, even with the attorney. So thank you for doing that. But we had a chance to meet all of our coaches together and get feedback. And we came with a unanimous decision. And Lisa's going to share it. So to answer your question, we'd like to approve it all in one.
Yeah, you just said yes.
Okay, sorry. Yes, I had to get that in, but Beth Mancini as well too.
Thank you for the details, I appreciate that.
Lisa, before you go ahead, so it's listed on here twice, that's why I asked the question here. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the Tohato Student Handbook and Athletic Handbook, which is embedded in the student handbook, sorry, together as presented in the single document that we have available.
So moved.
Megan?
Second.
All right, Lori first, sorry. Lisa, quick update, what are we, what are we doing? What's, what's the big change?
So the big.
On page 39?
I know, I'm trying, okay. So here, well, on the Athletic Handbook.
Eighty-nine.
On page ninety?
Yes, eighty-nine, ninety.
Eighty, ninety-nine, ninety. So it's really about the process, putting in place the process for participation for middle school students. And I think that that was something that was lacking. Previously, we only had a very small section that said six, seventh and the eighth grade students are expected to try out for middle school team. They may try out for JV if there isn't a middle school team or instructed to do so by the coach. So there wasn't a process in place. And so, so, you know, building culture for an athletic program and trying to move in a, in a direction where there are more guidelines in terms of, you know, how, how sports participation is managed is important. So we sat as a group and identified an appropriate process through which this could happen. And making sure that students are academically, physically, and emotionally ready to participate in sports at the middle school level and what level they should be playing at. Because we see that there's very different circumstances. And the circumstances have changed because of so many club sports. And so, so we have, really had to put in place a process. Because there are so many, you know, are, there's so many different teams, there's so many different situations that we can't dictate every single sport. We can't say, you know, this, this, these people can play at this sport and not this sport. We just had to have a process and including coaches, parents, you know, administration, athletic director.
So that process is on page ninety here. And to summarize it, like you just said, sixth, eighth, expect to go for middle school. But if those individuals, coach, athletic director, parents, principal are involved, there's potential to play up. It's laid out here on page ninety. And so that's what we're approving right now.
Can I just ask one question? I noticed under D roster protection, it says no upperclassmen, grades nine through 12, made him cut from a JV team to make room for middle school student. Did you not include varsity because it's such a rarity that a middle school student would play varsity?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, then if you read the document from like top to bottom, bottom down, there's like stopgaps in between. So, and, and, and that was, I think, we all kind of got caught in it when we were talking as a group. But you have to, you have to read through the document. The process is a process, like a step process, so that, so you can read it that way.
That was what I assumed as I went down, but I just wanted to double check because it did, that's, that was my feeling, but.
Right, yes.
And we finally have a process that we're trying to get in place, right? So, and we need to make sure our, our high school principals are involved with that process, as well as the parents and our athletic director, not just the coach making any decision. No one should be making any decision in isolation, but getting a team involvement on that. Any other comments on it?
Yeah, I was curious, so like up number three, A3, you know, it says parent guardian notification and approval before they try out. But then under P, like playing up halfway through the season, it doesn't say parent or guardian approval. So I'm curious.
Because the tryouts would be approved.
So that particular individual would have had to have the approval to try out. They weren't originally chosen, but then halfway through, then that could change. Okay, all right, so there's still parent approval for that.
It's that whole September column. Baseball fans. It goes back to what our parents said, right? Like every child's different. All right, any other questions on it?
Yeah, Beth, I mean, you were there, do you feel like the coaches, this is?
I could only stay for an hour. So the real meat, I feel like took place after my parents.
It was very collaborative, it was really, it was the first time, I believe, that so many coaches were in the same room. And it was a really meaty conversation, a much needed conversation. And we also walked away with understanding that, you know, what different levels of coaching were feeling about the process, what different sports were feeling, because it's very different. Because when you're talking cross country or track and field, it's very different than when you're talking.
Contact sports.
Contact sports.
Well, even the baseball coach, right? He's like, I don't want my student pitching to a sixth grader, right? And I'm standing on that, right? So it was.
So, and I think that was important. And we came to realize that there has to be more of those conversations and really developing programs based on what we're seeing in sports. So if we see that there's this really, you know, large influx of students who want to play soccer, then, you know, how, how do we manage that? We want everybody, so what are we looking to do as a group?
There were ebbs and flows in that meeting for certain, right? Lisa facilitated a really good meeting, along with the other administrators as well too, and our athletic director, so thank you for that. All right, anyone else?
So I'm curious, so like at the end, was this kind of like the draft that was like?
This was, I mean, we were typing.
Typing.
Typing and editing.
The editor made.
And then I'm like, oh, because everybody agreed on this. Did everybody agree on this? As, are we, I mean, it was very close like that.
Each word, like we went bullet by bullet.
Great, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Nice job, just don't take that. Anything else, Gibson?
No, I just, you know, we did a lot of public comments and so it's good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Okay, that motion passes. Next is the nature classroom, nature's classroom dates. Yep, so I know there was a conversation last time about first of the financial, thanks Lisa, financial fundraising for nature's classroom. This is to approve the dates for nature's classroom. It's May 19th, which is a Tuesday, we start all on. And the last day is May 22nd, which is a Friday of 2026. So it's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. It's obviously happening in child naps. But we're asking because it's an overnight field trip for you guys to approve that on the record. And then we'll have Mike you sign off as the chair. Approving an overnight field trip, which all school committees have to approve first and then signed off by the chair. Al, if we don't approve these dates, are there other options? No, so we learned a lesson. We booked the dates ahead of time, as John said, because they book up fast. So we really just need you to approve these if we could. Could I have a motion to approve the nature's classroom dates for May 19th, 2026 through May 22nd, 2026?
So moved.
Jess?
Second.
Megan? Any questions on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? All right, that's approved. The BES roof, Eric, could you come up and talk to us about this?
Sure, thank you. So you have a memo for me. I was at a meeting of the Boylston Select Board on October 14th. The, the discussion was around the proposal from the designer and the contractor to replace the BES roof. The Select Board was in favor of doing the full project. The select board was in favor of doing the full project, let's see, highlighted in yellow, the four million, one hundred and thirteen, whoops, sorry, I put my glasses off, because I shouldn't have, four million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars. That would be done through a combination of MSBA funding and a debt exclusion bond, the town would kick out.
For justice.
So you're looking at about fifty percent give or take, it's probably fifty-two percent might be picked up by MSBA. That final calculation will come, and they figure that all of that out. But this does include some contingency money. You know, the, the challenge is going to be, this is going to have to go to town meeting, and then to a vote by the residents of Boylston. It wouldn't impact Berlin, as we consider on Boylston's works for capital.
So Aaron, even if we approve this, it's not a done deal, it's going to go through town meeting? Just town meeting? Are they doing a separate meeting for the bond?
For a debt exclusion bond, we need a town meeting, then an actual election.
Right, so it's like, like last year?
It'll be valid, Megan, yep. Just like the fire station, it's going to be the same exact thing.
Right.
So was it always this number, four million?
It's, it's been this number since, so we, I mean, this hasn't gone back. I know this goes back quite a ways, the roof. This proposal came out in early September. So this is why, you know, it went to the town of Boylston. April and I have been back and forth a couple of times about, you know, whether this would be something the select board would support. And interestingly, we took it with these alternates, we wanted to give them some options to look at. They were pretty much set to go the full, if we're going to do it, let's just do the whole thing, let's do it right. This will do, the roof will be PVC, which is a higher grade material. It is easier to patch, you actually somehow weld it rather than patch it. So it's, I, I don't know much about PVC roofs. April seemed a little more knowledgeable than me, but it's, it's a cleaner process to patch the roof.
And this is both Boylston Select Board and Finance Committee are good with this number?
I believe so. Well, this was a select board meeting, so I don't know.
So I'm trying to get at, if we approve this number tonight, are they going to come back and yell at us and say, no, what are you doing? That's crazy?
Select Board already approved it, but I don't think where, this isn't a number that we have to approve. I, I think they just want, we have an option, this is the MSBA. This is what, so this is through the state. If we don't do this, it's their decision if they do less. But the other, there was a lesser quote, but it wasn't through the MSBA, and it wasn't to do the full roof. It was to just like put a resurface in, and then we have to pay for that ourselves, which would be about one and a half million dollars, so it would be about the same. This, we get two million dollars from the state, or two million and change from the state. The other one, the town would have to pay.
So when it comes to our budget, vote for town meeting, does any of this get into our budget that we approve? That if that doesn't pass a town, if the roof doesn't pass a town meeting, the whole budget doesn't pass?
Not, not, not directly, no, not the operating budget. So if anything, this would hit some of the capital considerations, but again, it's, so there was conversation about, you know, this would be taken into consideration as part of our capital. But I mean, realistically, our needs are our needs, right? The conversation was.
Even if the capital doesn't pass the town meeting?
If the boiler goes, the boiler needs to be replaced. I mean, that's, that's an amount that the town's going to have to come up with. So, you know, it's also a debt exclusion bond, so it's not necessarily going to hit their excess cash and things like that.
I think it's on the town budget, Mike, to answer your question. That's not going to be our capital, it's going to be on the town budget, yeah.
Okay, so this isn't going to affect passing the school budget, adjusting the school budget.
No.
Adjusting the school budget.
Be a different warrant, right? It's a different warrant item, it's going to be its own warrant.
So it'll be seven, okay.
We just wanted to make sure that you knew about it, and what they asked us to do was to put it in front of you guys for a vote. They wanted to make sure that you guys knew what was going on with this.
This, this is supporting.
That's right.
The, doing the full project. They, they voted.
Just want to make sure we're not shooting ourselves in the foot in May.
No, they want, they want us to be in alignment when it goes to town meeting, so that it's not like, oh, the schools didn't want this, but we did, or, oh, well, the schools wanted it, but we didn't. They want everyone in alignment, and this is what they decided they wanted to do. So this is the, I think it's the best case scenario for the school.
Without getting ahead of myself, I would imagine the schools want it. But at the expense of literacy coaches and other teachers, and two high school teachers, you know? That's what I'm trying, but it's a separate thing?
Yep.
Separate, and this is, we're getting two million from the state on this. So if you're thinking about it like that, this is the only, if you don't.
So go with two million from the town, two million from, give or take, yeah.
But if you don't, if you pass upon this opportunity.
Yeah, you lose that, yeah.
You lose the MSBA.
You would never want to give up money coming from the state, right? No matter what it is, free money, free money comes into the state?
Let's be clear, though, that free money, we've been working really hard for the amount of April, like April and myself. I mean, this is like, it's not, not this week, let's be very clear about this.
It's probably quarter of that, Aaron.
The amount of signatures and, you know, certified information, we like, it's been a lot of work to get this.
So Aaron, you have a recommendation here, so could I have a motion, please, to confirm the, our school committee's intent to pursue the proposed full Boylston Elementary School roof project through MSBA and a total estimated cost of four million, one hundred and thirteen thousand, sixty-eight dollars, in conjunction with the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five affirmative vote of the town of Boylston Select Board?
So, second.
Lori, Megan, okay? Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against it? Okay, that motion passes, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you very much.
Next is another executive session, we're going to vote to go to executive session. We will not return to open session, there is no vote, but there is an update. Executive session pursuant to, may I have a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, Purpose Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. BBRSD, custodian staff, team serves local one seventy. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining position of public body to the chair, so declares.
So moved.
Megan?
Second.
Lori? Roll call, Lisa?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Lori?
Hi.
Megan?
Hi.
Jess?
Aye.
Alright, we're going to go into executive session, thank you.